We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for April the 4th, 2023. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting from March the 21st, or any additions or corrections to those minutes.
May for approval.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Auburn Public Library Board, Mayor Protem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Terms begin April 15th, 2023, and then April 14th, 2027. We have one incumbent, Karen Herring, who served one full term, and Betty Burgess, who served two full terms. We'll take these one term, uh, one vacancy at a time. For the first one, for Karen Herring's position, I'd like to nominate Karen Herring for a second full term.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and second for Karen Herring. Were there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate, uh, Dr. Carol Dale to the Auburn Public Library Board.
Okay. Dr. Carol Dale, is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second for Dr. Carol Dale. Is there any other nominations at this time? Okay. We'll have discussion at this moment. Is there any discussion for Karen Herring, please?
Um, I just would like to say, I think she's done an admirable job, and, um, six members of this council appointed her in 2019, and it's been our longstanding, um, practice if someone has done a decent job that we reappoint them to a second term.
Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I echo Mayor Protem's comments. Uh, we were, we were enthusiastic to invoke for this incumbent the first round. Uh, there is a precedent in this council to, uh, vote a second term for every applicant, and I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. For Dr. Dale?
Yes, sir. Uh, great respect, um, for Karen Herring, but, uh, I wish to nominate Dr. Carol Dale to the board. Um, she is a retired, recently retired physician. She brings a science background of over forty years as a healer and a servant to the public. Dr. Dale grew up here. She loves Auburn. She values this community. She is now in a position to give back, and we are blessed to have her as an applicant to the library board.
Anyone else like to speak for Dr. Dale? Okay. This time we'll do this by, uh, you will raise your hand, okay? So, all in, uh, all in favor of Karen Herring, please raise your hand.
This is five?
Yeah. Okay. That's five. All right. So, we will appoint Karen Herring later on in the agenda. All right. For the second?
Uh, for the second vacancy, I'd like to nominate Bernard Anderson.
Second.
Have a motion and second for Bernard Anderson. Any other nominations from the dice? Okay. Any discussion about Mr. Anderson?
I would, I would like to just say that, uh, I think that Pastor Anderson would be a great exit to the library board because I've known him basically as a person in the community, a citizen in the community, and also as a pastor. And I think he'll bring a lot of value to the, uh, board, and it would, uh, also bring a little diversity also on, in, um, to the board also. So, um, I would be in favor of nominating, I mean, saying, voting for Bernard Anderson as our second.
Sure.
Person.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else for Bernard? Please.
I, I just do this because there's so much to say about him. He is also a volunteer at Mercy Medical. He's a counselor there. He's got experience, um, many years as a counselor, and he gives of himself, and he is just an extraordinary individual, and I could go on, but I just want to give my, uh, my second to that.
Sure. He's been a minister in our community for a long, long time, and a public servant for a long time as well. I believe he'll do an outstanding job. All right. All in favor of Bernard Anderson, please raise your hand. Okay. You know us? All right. We will confirm that later on in the agenda. Okay. Scooter update.
Will is going to handle that for us.
Okay. Public Safety Executive Director, Mr. Matthews.
City Council. So, in reference to, uh, the scooter phenomenon that we're seeing around the city, um, the, the issue that we have is that neither state legislation or city code directly, uh, or effectively regulates and defines the, uh, electronic scooter that is so widely used around, um, the university's campus and, and the downtown core. Um, the state statute does define shared micro mobility systems and devices. Uh, however, it does not define the privately owned vehicles, and that's what we're seeing the most of outside of campus. Uh, absent any specific definition and, and regulation for that, um, our legal council has given an opinion that they have to be treated as a motor vehicle, most closely defined as a, uh, motor scooter, which would require to be operated on the roadway, uh, a helmet worn, registration, all of the other, um, requirements of a motor vehicle. Uh, as far as enforcement goes, it would require a uniform traffic citation if we were to enforce the use of those vehicles on the roadway. On a sidewalk, it would require, you know, vehicle operating on a sidewalk, which is a pretty stiff moving violation, or reckless driving, which can suspend a driver's license. Uh, so that's what we're looking at as far as enforcement, if we do anything above, you know, just a warning and an, uh, educational contact. Um, the state statute for shared micro mobility vehicles clearly states that they should be treated as a bicycle with all the rights of a bicyclist and the, um, the restrictions of a bicyclist. However, again, it does not define the personally owned, uh, vehicle, only shared micro mobility. So, our recommendation is that the city code 2211, uh, be amended to properly define what an e-scooter is, and also to implement the prohibition of its use in the downtown business district. And then Chief Anderson is going to talk about enforcement.
How you doing, Chief?
Wonderful. Good evening, y'all.
Good to have you. Thank you for being here.
All right, sir. Um, back in the summer of 2022, when we found out that Auburn University was going to, uh, go into an agreement with a vendor to provide the, uh, scooters to the campus, they were going to allow them to be operated on campus and on campus only. We knew we were gonna, gonna have some issues coming into the, the corridor of downtown. So, what we, we did was we immediately, in August of that, that summer, we started sending out notifications via social media. Uh, typically what we do, anytime we see something new trending, there's new law, there's, there's anything new going on, we, we try to get ahead of it by informing and educating, and that's what we're using our social media platforms to do. Uh, once we did that, you know, we, we sent out wave after wave of those, those notifications, all of them promoting safety and, and just encouraging people to, to use safe methods and, and, uh, to dress appropriately when riding with safety equipment and that kind of stuff. Well, um, once that, that passed in, I think, late October, early November, we actually started a campaign where we were assigning officers into the downtown area during the day, Monday through Friday, eight to five, and their sole purpose was to contact people that were riding the, uh, scooters on the sidewalks. This was in response to the complaints that we're getting from citizens saying that they were nearly struck or coming out of a business and, and the scooter swizzed by at a, uh, in excess of speed. Uh, just that first month alone, November, um, first or second through the end of November, we contacted over a hundred and fifty, uh, people riding scooters on the, on the sidewalks downtown. All of these people were warned and, and, and I guess educated again about the, the dangers of riding on the sidewalk. Uh, the issue, the dilemma we have is if we tell them to get into the street and something happens to them, we may assume some of that liability. So, it's, it's no place for us to tell them to go. So, um, that detail continued up until last week. So, we, it's been an ongoing thing. We've been trying to contact and educate since this, this whole thing started, but without the ability to do any more than that, uh, you know, it, we, we, we need something that's going to give us the, the, I guess, the, the teeth to actually enforce, enforce properly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sure. I'm sure, uh, Mr. Griswold, you asked us to, to have this moment tonight. I wanted to-
Appreciate that. Thank you both for the update. Um, it looks like you're in a, a bad situation. It's got, you can't have them on the sidewalk, can't have them on the street. Yet, in reality, you know they're not going to be wearing helmets and getting a license and registering them and all that stuff because it's gonna be a, an enforcement nightmare for you. I, I really don't understand why we just don't do a blanket, treat things as a bicycle. Bikes, scooters, skateboards, you know, the whole gamut. One set of rules for everyone, if they're in the street, they have to operate, uh, just like a motor vehicle does with, uh, like a bicycle does, obey the traffic rules. If they don't, there's their consequences. Obviously, I, I agree with you about keeping them off the sidewalks in downtown district, but I'm just looking at from a, per overall perspective. I don't understand how you're gonna ever enforce anything. Um, and so it'd just be very simple to me to treat them all the same as personal micro mobility vehicles.
Is that one of the recommendations of the, that you mentioned, uh, Mr. Will, to eliminate downtown? Was that roads and sidewalks?
So, the, the current code, um, specifically addresses sidewalks.
Okay.
And it, it defines the vehicles that cannot ride or operate on the sidewalk as, you know, skateboard, skates, bicycles. Um, we think that we need to define what the e-scooter is, the privately owned e-scooter is, and then also restrict it from operating on the sidewalks. Uh, I, I think, you know, certainly the governing body of, of the local jurisdiction has the authority to approve the shared micro mobility, um, systems. We are not at all encouraging that to happen, and even if you did, it doesn't cover the privately owned, uh, scooters. And so that's problematic, and that's a, that's a state legislation issue. Uh, so, uh, I, I think that it will help us significantly if we address that city code and amend it to reflect, uh, that prohibition, and then we would actually be able to do, um, you know, cite those that operate on the sidewalk with violating that municipal code rather than writing them a traffic citation that's going to affect their points, potentially their insurance, and then eventually, uh, could suspend their driver's license privilege.
What you're proposing is, uh, writing them an N U, N U T C, non-uniform traffic citation if they're riding on the sidewalk downtown?
Once we get the city code amended, yes, sir.
Right. That's what you're asking for.
Yes, sir.
But it would only be, be the same as the downtown area now. The vibe, it wouldn't be all over, all over.
That's correct.
I have a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
Is there a mechanism in place already to register a scooter? Would that mean a tag is on the scooter?
In, in theory, the way that, the only thing that we can define it as right now is a motor vehicle, just because of the lack of an appropriate definition.
Right. My second part of my question is, um, would, would they be allowed to, uh, ride on multi-use paths?
If it were treated as a bicycle, I think so, but, um, you know, in, uh, multi-use paths outside of the downtown core, just-
Yes.
Anywhere. Uh, again, you're, you know, conflicting pedestrians with a motorized vehicle, and that's always a dangerous situation, so I wouldn't recommend it. Uh, but, you know, there's, there's two sides of it. Do we want children that have them riding in the neighborhoods, actually riding in the, in the roads? You know, I, I don't think that that's a good idea either. Uh, so, a- again, it's a, it's a sticky situation. Uh, there's pros and, well, really, there's cons for every situation that I can think of in operating them safely, especially around crowds. Uh, the majority of the accidents that we've seen involving these vehicles have been on campus. Um, well, really, it's about fifty-fifty, um, but mostly around campus. So, fifty percent on campus, probably forty percent on the adjacent areas around campus where the concentration is, and then a few outside of that downtown core.
Thank you.
Mr. Edge, can we get a copy of the presentation so-
Sure.
So we can see-
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It kinda went through quickly, so, okay. Thank you.
And it also has examples of the social media education that we've, um, that we've put out there for consideration.
Have y'all studied other municipalities and how they're handling this problem? Because it's not just an Auburn problem.
So, in, other, other places have done it for years and had, you know, everything from minor accidents to scooters being left on the sidewalks abandoned because the batteries, um, you know, were exhausted and they didn't know what to do with them, so they just abandoned them. Uh, we saw that, you know, with our, uh, first experience with scooters where the company just came in and kind of blanketed the area without any notice. Uh, there have been some fatalities involving scooters mixing with vehicles in the roadway. Um, but in any specific cities, we haven't, we haven't reached out to get statistics or anything.
So, Mr. Edge, there's a draft of this potential new ordinance? Is that?
There is not yet.
There's not yet? Okay.
If, if the council would like for us to come up with a draft, we're certainly happy to do that and submit it for consideration.
So, so the draft that you're contemplating still only addresses downtown?
It would only address the downtown business district, and it would add the definition of the e-scooter to include both shared micro mobility and personally owned scooters.
I'm sorry, that just doesn't seem to be sufficient to me. Uh, we could fix that just by putting up some different signs, you know, some signage that includes scooter, skateboards, bicycles. We have signs downtown now that have, that say, uh, bicycles and s- and skateboards, I think.
Right, but they're-
The issue is much bigger than just this downtown business district area.
Certainly.
I mean, people down in, in North College where I live, they're hauling tail down the sidewalks, and, and if that's what we want them to do, that's fine. Uh, do we want them on the sidewalks? Want them on the streets? I don't know. I personally like the idea of personal transportation, and, but I, uh, you know, I ride a bicycle around town. I ride it in the street without a helmet, because that's my choice, but, um, you know, you're sudden subject to the, uh, rules and regulations of the road, just like any other bicycle. I just really don't think that we are, I think we're just doing half a loaf here by, by putting some extra words in our existing ordinance. I just don't think we're addressing the problem. With the definition piece of that, I mean, y'all feel handicapped because there's not a clear definition of what a scooter is, right? I mean, did I not understand that from your comments?
There's not a clear definition for a privately owned-
Privately owned scooter.
Yeah, scooter. So, there is a definition for the shared micro mobility, um, device, and that is in state code. And unfortunately, when the, when the code was written, they didn't include privately owned vehicles. They only include the, those devices that are for short-term rental and, um, in shared use.
But the same, the vehicle's the same?
It is.
Okay.
It's just the use.
And what about e-bikes, electric bikes?
Right.
Do we address that as, or is it perceived as a bike?
It, it is perceived as a bike, but it, it is included in the micro, in the shared micro mobility statute.
Even privately owned, or just-
No.
Okay. Only shared? Okay.
But privately owned e-bikes have to abide by the rules of road, just like-
That's correct.
Privately owned bicycles.
That's correct, and they are defined in the state code, state statute.
E-bikes are defined?
Yes, they are.
Why don't we define it? Can we do that?
We'd have to check with, uh, city attorney to see.
And if you do that, and little Johnny gets one for Christmas, gets on the sidewalk, some officer could ride him.
That's correct. If there's a prohibition-
Yeah.
-citywide.
So, I don't know how that would go, how that would, I, I understand where Council and Griswold's coming from, but my, two issues I got with that is somebody's, where does it stop? Kid wants to ride on the sidewalk in the neighborhood, and frankly, uh, if you look around our surrounding area, Columbus, Montgomery, crime is soaring. Auburn's soaring growing, but our crime rate is staying relatively low. I don't want to put more on these guys than they can handle now, so I just feel like it's really, uh, they're doing an excellent job. I don't know how they could keep up with it like they do. It's really, speaking for someone who used to have to do it for a living, it, they're doing a remarkable job. I think sometimes we lose sight of that, and we just want to put everything off on the police and let them do it. Well, maybe you could do it where, uh, it's some kind of, see, see the authorities for the codes enforcement could do something about it or somebody. I just don't, I just don't think we want to put that much on our police officers, and I, I can see it happening. Little Johnny's gonna get one for his birthday at Christmas and hit the sidewalk, because I, I tell him, because my kid, I tell him to stay on the sidewalk. Some officer's going to see it and write him a ticket or get a complaint about it and have to write him a citation or whatever, and I, I just, where does it stop? Now, downtown, I totally agree. You have people coming in at the stores and disturb the people and almost hit them. So, it used to happen with the bicycles when I was down here years ago working. So, uh, but I just, I got, I really don't want to put nothing else on, from my standpoint. Now, I, I would hate to put more on them than they already got on them by having to worry about scooters and, uh, uh, especially out in downtown area. If you get a complaint on one, I can see the officer going out and stopping somebody saying, just got a complaint about you riding on the sidewalk recklessly, and if it continues, I'm gonna write you for reckless driving or whatever else. It could find it apply. Once you warn them and they keep doing it, then I can see, I can see doing that, but I just really, I want to say again, I appreciate the job, uh, Director Matthews and Chief Anderson y'all are doing, because I watch the television every day, the news, and read the paper. Crime is horrific around Auburn. Uh, I mean, look at Montgomery, Columbus, and other, LaGrange, but, uh, we, we so far, through the grace of God, and we've got hard-working police men and women managed to keep it off of us. So, uh, I don't, I don't, I think it comes from a lot of prayer, from men like, uh, Director Matthews and Chief Anderson leading us, and, uh, just appreciate what you're doing. I, I'd just hate to put any more on.
I, I, I'm not sure I, I understand why a, um, why the motorized scooter would be treated as a motor vehicle, and the electric bicycle would not be treated the same way.
It, it- Simply because of the state defining it in statute.
Okay.
So, the state has defined an electric bicycle and defined it as, uh, such that it would be treated as a bicycle for the rules of the road.
And they're silent on a personal micro mobility device?
So, the, the e-bicycle or the electric bicycle, um, is included in both, it stand alone, it has a standalone definition in statute, and it's included in the shared micro mobility statute. The scooter is only addressed in the micro mobility statute.
And in, and in the micro mobility statute, they require them to be-
Treated as a bicycle, but that's only when they're used in a business fashion for short-term rentals and shared by the public. So, had the state legislature left off shared and left off the definition of for short-term rental, then it would apply to all of them, but, but they didn't. They very specifically defined them as devices that are shared by the public, rented for short-term use, um, and did not at all address the pu, the personally owned.
So, the reason that we feel the, that, that, that we feel like we would need to classify those as a, a motor vehicle is because they aren't defined by the state?
Correct.
Okay.
Basically, the, the state statute says that all other vehicles will be considered motor vehicles, and then if you get into the motor vehicle statute and it defines motor scooter, it most closely falls under that statute, which is-
It exempts the other ones, and that's-
A, a device weighing less than one hundred pounds that, um, satisfies all of the following: has handlebars, an electric motor, is solely powered by electric motor, human power, and does not exceed twenty miles an hour-
Yeah.
-on a level paved surface.
Thank you. That, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if, if you put restrictions on, on the, um, the scooters, uh, the private ones, and, uh, maybe to ride them on the sidewalks and stuff, so what, what would happen in a neighborhood that don't have sidewalks, and you got a bunch of kids in that neighborhood, and there's no sidewalks? So-
So, the restriction would be to not ride them on the sidewalk, to interfere with pedestrians? Should there, should there be, um, an amendment to the existing city code, or if a completely new city code was written? Um, I assume that the council would want to look at prohibiting them from operating on a sidewalk at all.
Okay. So, if, if that's the case, that means that they'll have to ride them in the roadway, right?
In the roadway. That's right.
Okay. So, is it like a, when you said the- Okay, so is it like a, when you said the roadway, are you talking about like a bike lane or just random as a car does?
So, if there is a bike lane available, then you would use the bike lane, but of course, every road doesn't have a bike lane. So, it'd be as, as close as possible to the right-hand curb.
But the, the three-foot rule would apply-
It would.
To these devices as well?
If you treat it solely as a bicycle.
As a bicycle.
Yes.
So, conceptually, we could say we prohibit e-scooters and the like on sidewalks. However, ride at your own risk on, on the path of the road, a multi-use path, at your own risk and treat them like bicycles if we so choose.
In theory, again, it, you know, there's some-
There's options.
There's some options there and, and, you know, it would have to be vetted by the, the legal team.
Sure.
What are we writing for the downtown bicycles now? Is it non-uniform traffic citation?
I believe when we first started making contact, we were doing non-uniform citations. But then after getting the legal opinion from, from the city attorney and the municipal judge, you know, the opinion was that we needed to write, if we're going to enforce it, that we needed to write it on the UTC, on a uniform traffic citation.
Bicycles?
For the e-scooters.
What, what are you riding a bicycle for now?
Yes, the bicycles are cited on a, just a municipal citation, doesn't affect driver's license or anything like that. So, it's, it's in-house.
I, I really like Councilman Witten's approach to that, you know, basically it's treating them like bicycles. And if they ride them in the road, it's at their own risk. And I also agree now with Chief Dawson, I said, I'm not trying to put any additional burden on the, on our police officers. I think that's great that, what they do, just, we needed to find something, we need to address the problem throughout the city, not just in downtown. Just either treat them like a bicycle or we don't treat them like a bicycle. I mean, that's kind of where we stand. The downtown part is, is a given. I don't think anybody here wants them riding bikes, scooters, skateboards or anything else downtown. But throughout the rest of the city, I think we still need to find a, a common solution and let the public know what the rules are. And I appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Griswold, but I think about these other neighborhoods that have a lot of children in them and the children are going to ride them on the sidewalks, and I think our police officers have got better things to do than to chase down eight-year-old boys riding-
I agree.
-scooters, you know, so I don't know how we delineate one from another. I don't know how we do that. I'm sure we can do that.
You don't.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's worth further conversation. I don't think we're going to solve this tonight, so.
But thank you for your time, Allison. I mean, I think, I don't know how we keep the, keep this going from here, but we can, certainly when the city manager gets back tomorrow, we can follow up with them.
Yes.
Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, good. Very informative. All right, any questions on tonight's agenda? Anything for us?
I don't have anything.
Okay, is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole? All right, the committee of the whole is adjourned, and at this time, I'll go ahead and open the city council meeting for April the 4th, 2023. Who's the roll call, Lindsay?
Adams.
Here.
Coglins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. It is the first meeting of the month of April, so we'll begin with our employee of the month and service awards video. We're proud to introduce you to our April employee of the month, and I have a memorandum here from Katrina Cook, our environmental services director, that I'd like to read to you. I'm pleased to nominate Leanne Clements as the employee of the month. Leanne began working with the city in 2015 in the inspection services department, and she joined environmental services in 2019 as the administrative assistant. Leanne is a major contributor to the functions of fleet, of the fleet services division. She works with each city department to ensure proper invoice processing for replacement parts and the purchase of new equipment and vehicles. She has been a key contributor to several projects in the city, including the rollout of the automotive vehicle location telematic software and organizing the continuing education and training programs for the employees of the fleet services division. She often assists the department with other special events, contributing, contributing by crafting fun life-size items created from recycled materials to promote the department's outreach efforts with recycling, as well as greeting each participant that arrives for our household hazardous waste collection and disposal events. Leanne is described by her colleagues as always having a positive attitude and being exceptionally pleasant to work with. She readily assists the department's administrative staff when needed and eagerly volunteers to assist with other tasks such as serving on the city's events committee and an employee engagement committee. Leanne's hard work and dedication are valuable to the department, and she's highly deserving of this recognition. It is for these reasons that I am very proud to nominate Leanne Clements as the employee of the month for April 2023. Thank you, Leanne. I appreciate everything you did. All right, we're very proud to be here today with the 2022, 2023 Alabama State Girls Football Champions here from Auburn High School. And I have a resolution to read on their behalf from the Auburn City Council. Whereas the city council is pleased to honor Auburn City Schools, its faculty, staff and students for their excellent achievements and contributions both inside and as of today, outside the classroom. And whereas the Auburn High School Girls Flag Football Team recently claimed its first state title during the second ever Alabama High School Athletic Association's state championship. And whereas after 11-1 regular season, the Tigers dominated their four playoff games against Valley, Opelika, Central, Hoover. And then whereas the team went on to defeat Oxford 26-6 in the championship game at Jordan Hare Stadium on November the 30th, 2022. Whereas the championship team consists of, and when I say your name, if you just kind of raise your hand a little bit, all right? You can be subtle about it. Madison Allen, Lenaya Bowens, Camden Cleveland, Soraya Daniels, Sharia Jankar, Arwin Esprey. Did I get that right? Close? Thank you for your patience. Brooke Hallman, Nevia Jackson, Harper Olson. All right, Aleah Parker, Tate Pearson, Elizabeth Robinson, Campbell Spratlin, Riley Tucker, Cristiano Ware, and Jordan Wilson. Now therefore be resolved by the city council in the city of Auburn, Alabama, that the council hereby recognizes and formally congratulates the players and coaches from the Auburn High School Girls Flag Football Team for their outstanding achievements and their exemplary efforts in representing Auburn City Schools and the city of Auburn. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and presented to head coach Allison Link and her team, adopted and approved by the city of Auburn, Alabama on the fourth day of April 2023. Congratulations, girls. We're proud of you. Plan for Auburn moving future, moving into the future. Just a couple announcements tonight. This afternoon, I attended the services for former mayor Don Hayhurst. Mayor Hayhurst served Auburn from 1976 to 1980. He passed away at the ripe old age of 99 years old. He was a World War II veteran, actually landed on D-Day, also served in the Korean War. He was a political science professor here at Auburn and served this city as well. He's been retired and living in the Prattville area for a number of years. But certainly, we remember Mayor Hayhurst and his service to our community. Well, remind everybody, weather permitting, that the Easter egg hunt is this Saturday, and I guess we'll, Ms. Richardson, we'll try to make the best of it. The weather looks pretty ominous as we speak, and, but anyway, thank you for all that effort that your staff goes through to provide that for our children here this, this, this year and every year. Recently, I was able to have some time with the German Technical College that sent professors and students over to Auburn as a partnership with our College of Engineering. Very interested in talking to people who are doing the same thing that a lot of folks do in this community, teaching young people, looking at engineering and, and technology as we move into the future. Enjoyed certainly the time that we spent with them. I have failed to mention this at our last meeting, but I want to thank the people over at True Deliverance, Deliverance Holiness Church and Calvin Patrick in particular, and certainly Bishop Talbert for hosting a job fair recently. There was a number of people that came to their multipurpose facility and a number of companies, and I hope that there was a number of people who found great jobs. And then this weekend, for those of us of the Christian faith, is our most important day and it's Easter, and I wish everybody a happy Easter and safe travels for you and your family as you move around this weekend to be with your families. Any other announcements from the council?
I do, I have. I just want to say that I went to Washington DC to the National League League of Cities Conference last week, and I learned a lot at the conference, and so I brought a lot of ideas back to present to our city council. At the league, you meet a lot of different city councilmen, mayors, city managers, city personnel, while you're there from all over the world. So, they, you know, everybody got issues, just like this city. So, they tried to come together and they tried to make some things happen. And so, there was a lot of good ideas and a lot came out of this conference, and I was glad to be a part of it. We actually got a chance in, in the general session to listen at a speech from First Lady Jill Biden. So, that was very informative and learned a lot from her and what the president is, has going on and what's coming down the pipe. So, I encourage the city council members to go to these National League of Cities because they are very informative, very, very informative. Not, not you because I need your money, but, you know. I just miss the realness. But, but it, it was, it was really a good conference, and I do encourage everybody to go out and just, you know, meet different people, network with different city councilmen and mayors, and, but it was a good conference.
Good, thank you, Mr. Edge.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pass on the condolences to the family of Cynthia Peak, who passed away in our, in the Nashville shootings last week. Ms. Peak was a member of our community for several years and I think moved away a few years ago. Very active, at least got, they've got a lot of ties to Auburn University, so our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the Peak family. And just on, on top of that, just, I was really encouraged and by the bravery of the police officers there in Nashville and just made me very grateful for the police officers that we have here in our city and the job they do for protecting us. So, just, just wanted to say those things.
Thank you. Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hello, hello. I hope you're all well. Fairly short report for me tonight. First off, tickets are now on sale for the College of Human Sciences 12th Annual The Fashion Event. This year, it's called the 12th Hour, and this is the Auburn's premier fashion showcase that is fully planned and executed by our apparel and design students, and it is one of the top college-level fashion productions in the country. This is going to be April 14th at 6:00 PM in Beard East Coliseum, and general admission tickets run about $20 each. So, I encourage you to check that out if you have the chance. Next, I want to take a moment to brag on two of our student veterans in the College of Forestry and Wildlife and Environment as they were selected as finalists in the Presidential Management Fellowship Program. This is the federal government's flagship leadership program for advanced degree holders who have a passion for public service. They are our first finalists, finalists since 2018, and this is a big deal. It's a very prestigious fellowship, so we are very proud of them and we wish them luck in the next round. And then lastly, SGA has finally selected two new directors of city relations for the upcoming term, which unfortunately means this is my last report to you all, so I wanted to thank you for letting me stand up here and speak. I consider it a huge privilege to be able to get up here and talk about all of the great things that Auburn is doing, and I'm very glad that you all are willing to listen to me. I know you're in great hands with Jack and Lane as they take over. But thank you. That's all from me, Anne War Eagle.
Thank you, Ed. Great job. All right, this time is an opportunity for citizens to communicate to the city council about items on our agenda. There are no public hearings with our agenda tonight, our short agenda, so if you would like to speak to the city council about items on the agenda, now would be your time. We'd ask that you please come forward and share your name and address for the record. Remember, you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, we'll move forward with city manager's communications.
Okay, well, our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold. Mayor, I'd like to remove 8C, this isn't Charlie, 1, 8C1. 1, all right. Anyone else? Okay, 8C1.
Okay. Item 8C1 authorizes execution of a contract with Inline Electric Supply Incorporated for the purchase of four traffic signal poles and mast arms for the North Dean Road and East University Drive intersection improvements project in the amount of $172,745.31.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, Mr. Griswold. Thank you. Yes, I asked Scott Cummins for some answers on this today. He did provide them and I'm satisfied with his answers, but I just wanted to kind of make it clear to the public here, there's only one bidder on this project. And what I was asking him was, you know, do we only have one source for this? Is it because they're unique to Auburn, you know, where they match the other ones that we already have or whatnot? And, you know, that would really constitute a single-source solicitation, which we don't do. So, I was informed that, yeah, there is somebody else that does this. Inline has provided it in the past, and they were the only bidder this time around. Does anybody know why we can't get more solicitations on this kind of thing? Or do we not spread the net wide enough, or we're just limited to Auburn, or, I mean, Columbus, I mean, whatever?
I'll ask Allison Frazier to, to address that.
There are limited manufacturers that make the poles that we specify. In this case, there are two vendors that we sent letters to. The one that responded is the one who met the specification, meaning we wanted them to offload them as well as deliver the poles. The other vendor does not. Several years ago, we only had one source, and we did use a sole-source option for our traffic signal poles until the other manufacturer came online.
Okay, so we only asked two people to do, two companies to do this, to, to bid, and only one of them bid?
Yeah, so we have a registry of vendors that we send bid letters to based on their NICS, NCSI, whatever, their code.
Their code.
Yes. And these are the two that are most common responsive to us.
Okay, but there are others who received the communication?
I'm not sure how many letters go out, but it's, it's based on their code.
Because of our standardization of this, years ago, I'm not sure how long ago that was, there are only two that, that do that standardization. So, we, we issue the, the bid documents to those two because of that, of the standardization of that.
Is this available on, is it available online for?
These proposals go out directly to them.
Yes, but we do also post the information on our finance website.
It's online, so another vendor could, that, that possibly does this, could log on, could see it online-
Yes.
And could respond as well.
They could.
So, it is open to the entire public?
It is, it is.
It's open to the entire public, but we only sent the direct letters to two suppliers because they've serviced us in the past?
Yes, and those are the ones that are registered on our vendor list.
Right.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So they have to be registered on your vendor list, just say if there's another vendor that wanted to bid on this. So they have to get on the vendor list in order to bid, is that, is that how?
Not necessarily. We send the letters to those on the list if someone is not a vendor and they see the bid, because we send these, this information to plan rooms, and sometimes we get vendors that are not on our list that want to bid. So they go through the bid process and eventually have to get on our vendor list if they want to receive direct communication from us.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There are a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Then move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved, resolutions.
Okay. Item 10A authorizes a tax abatement for SCA Incorporated located at 764 West Veterans Boulevard in Auburn Technology Park North. The company will invest $6.7 million in equipment and building improvements and create 20 additional jobs.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council?
I'm just curious what SCA is, what do they bank, what do they do?
So SCA is an injection molding operation that make components for the air conditioning units in Hyundai, and that's what I know. If you, if you want a little bit more information, Leslie Chambers is here.
That's fine, that's good, all right, thank you.
To address that, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just general questions. Tax abatements could mean partial or complete, and they could last for several years, they could be forever, they could be for a year, or anything in between. Can you speak to the, to the length and the, and the amount, and maybe even the reason why we're doing this?
Yeah, I will, actually, we'll let Leslie Chambers come up and speak to the length and the, and the reasons.
This tax abatement is with an existing company that is in our technology park now. One of the reasons we go through these tax abatements with existing companies that are looking to expand their operations is to ensure that those jobs and that investment is made here in the city of Auburn. Most of our tax abatements are for a 10-year period of time. I believe this one is a fairly standard tax abatement that, that does last that, that 10 years. And we, we abate a portion of taxes, and we do not abate the school taxes, I believe that is correct, and the, the children's home taxes. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes execution of a contract with D&amp;J Enterprises Incorporated for construction of the Annalee Drive and East University Drive intersection improvements project in the amount of $1,054,382.60.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the council?
Sure. Sorry, another one. The two bids are a million dollars apart. That's very unusual, I would think. Is there something in the solicitation or thing that was not interpreted correctly, or what, I mean, a million-dollar delta between one construction company and another really jumps out?
Most of the prices on their common items were pretty close. Often contractors put their profit and overhead in different items, and I think that's what we see, but it is a pretty big disparity.
They both got the exact same opportunity to bid on the exact same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And this is also under budget, correct?
It is. Note that, please. And tell Megan when she gets back.
She noted that Thursday with us.
She did.
Small question, okay. You've driven a good bargain, and what if it's something that they can't honor because they lose money? Is there, what happens then? That's just the way it goes.
That's just the way it goes.
Oh, goodness.
All right. As far as there's, there's a, is there a median that's going to run from East University past Saga, past Saga Hatching North, or is that, or is it, or not a median, I guess, or concrete median there, or how is that? I was just kind of getting a little description of the project, a little.
Yeah, the median runs from, if you're familiar, if you're familiar, the west side of Saga Hatching.
Okay.
Kind of just past the east side up towards the Annalee intersection, but it's not the total length of the project. The primary purpose of that median is to block Saga Hatching from those left turns. And also, if you recall, on the right-hand side, the side that Match and Machesney is on, that portion of Saga Hatching has been removed, most of it.
Right.
So it will not be back in place, and we'll do right in, right out on the west side.
So is there any turning lanes off East University onto Saga Hatching Road right there at Match and Machesney? Is there any turning lanes available there or not, or there wouldn't be necessary?
We will have left turn lanes at the Annalee and Saga Hatching intersection where Match and Machesney is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C adopts the Community Development Block Grant 2023 Annual Action Plan. The CDBG 2023 fiscal year begins June 1st, 2023, and anticipated federal funding is
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got a, a couple of questions here. I was looking at this, the proposed allocation for these funds. Well, let me start with my first question. It says citizen participation. Can, when they, when they held these public hearings, were there many citizens that participated in these, in this hearing, and also were, where were they held at? I didn't see that.
And Al Davis, our Community Services Director, will respond.
Yes. The HUD requires that we have in place a citizen participation plan, and we have a very detailed plan that allows for a great deal of citizen participation. Not only do we provide notices of those, those public hearings, in this case, we did. We had two public hearings at the time that the applications were, were announced, so people could come in and actually receive information about the applications, be able to ask questions. We had two public hearings during that time. We had two additional public hearings once we decided on the proposed recommendations for funding. We advertise the public hearings in the newspaper, they are posted in the Auburn City Hall, the Auburn Public Library, as well as posted in our building. We also make sure that we post it on the digital sign at Borking as well. We, we make sure we call all of the recipients that are currently getting funded, as well of all the nonprofits in the community that request information about the CDBG program. Those have requested in the past, and those that have requested this past year. So we have quite a bit of citizen communication outreach efforts, and of course, we get calls from individuals seeking information about the program as well.
Okay, so I saw that there was a public hearing on February 1st related, so when that public hearing was held, Mr. Davis, were there a lot of citizens that participated?
We don't get a lot of citizen participation at our public hearings. If they're, if citizens are interested, they typically will call us. We do have people walk in and have to ask questions, but we don't typically have a lot of people at the public hearings, because most of the individuals that are interested in the program has already reached out to us.
Okay. And it was published in the Auburn Villager and on the city's website? Is the, is Auburn Villager, was that the only newspaper that it was published?
We're required to put it in one local newspaper, and that's the one we select. It has pretty good readership, and, and so we are, we're happy that we're able to reach the community that way.
Okay, and I'm just asking this question so that, so that people will understand, you know, how this works.
Correct.
Okay, now, I was also looking at the proposed allocation for $693,457. And the first thing on the list is the housing construction for 184, 181. So are there plans for, to build new houses with this money's?
With the funding in this proposal, we'll complete the three houses that we currently are finishing on Bird Street.
Okay.
We have three more that's currently under construction, so we'll be able to complete that subdivision with these funding.
Okay.
Then we'll move forward looking at some possibilities for the future.
Okay, 180, for all those that know, $184,000 don't seem, seem like a much, much for three houses, but I, I do know that, you know, this money is used for that, that purpose, and y'all do well with, with the funds that you do get from it. So, you know, that's a plus, and I thank you for that, too. So I was just wondering, so this is not new housing construction, not, because this construction, I guess when I first got on the council in 2018, those seven houses on Tucker was talked about at that point. So there was not enough money during that time, so we got to use this money here to finish out the job.
Well, and we do have some funds that, that we're currently using to, to start construction on the first two. So we do have program income, we have funds from previous years, so we're going to be able to finish out this subdivision with the funds we have on hand, with the addition of these dollars, we'll complete those three houses.
Okay, just one more question. And housing rehabilitation, $120,000, so I guess those funds are pretty much allocated, and people actually call in to get money to get their housing rehabilitated. Do you have to meet certain?
Well, let me explain a little bit about that line item. Not only, we're not spending $120,000 just on rehabbing houses. Those funds are also used, you can see that it's broken out into three allocations. $20,000 of those dollars we use to, we have quite a few legal fees and, and other items come, whether we're doing tile searches, legal fees relating to our current housing rehab program, loan program, where people were able to get houses rehabbed many years ago, deferred loan programs. So we still have a, a great deal of legal fees associated with those. So we always include money in the budget to help deal with those. And then we also have about $75,000 in there that goes towards helping with staff salaries, who also support not only the housing rehab efforts, but also the affordable housing efforts as well. So some of those dollars cover some, some salaries of staff. So $25,000 is actually what is allocated every year, typically we allocate to supporting housing rehab efforts. Now, we don't do the housing rehab ourselves, we work with a community partner, the Presbyterian Community Ministry, which we've worked with for many years, who not only use our allocation, but funds that they have to be able to, to do a lot more in the era of housing rehab than we would have to, we were, that we were able to do ourselves in-house. So having a good partner with PCM has been great for us.
Okay, I thought I had one more question, but let me just ask this one, I see, I got this one highlighted, too. For public infrastructure, and it says, "Street resurfacing Howard Tucker Street in the west of Bird." I know y'all started on Bird, so you're going to finish up going down Bird with this?
No, let me, if, if you're at the corner of Bird and Tucker, where we have one of our, our new affordable houses, if you kept straight through the intersection at Bird and Tucker, that, the end of Tucker on that side of the street is in this paving project, as well as all of Howard Street.
Okay, and Howard is, where is Howard?
Howard, if you know where, where Tucky is, it's a street over from, not Bird, but it's a street over from Bird. It's the, if you, if you, like I said, if you, if you're at the corner of Bird and Tucker, where our affordable housing, if you cross the intersection, it's the street behind the houses.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm talking about now? Yes.
Okay, okay, I got you. Okay, all right.
You good?
I'm good.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
Just a, just a summary, just words of summary. This is known as a block grant, and some people, including me, I had to go look that up. A block grant means you're given a large sum of money, and then you have to use your wisdom and discretion, as you had been describing here, in how to allocate those funds. So I compliment you on the defined detail that you presented on that tonight, and I point out that we have to receive that and shepherd those funds as best we can, and so, good job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for all your hard work.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
And those are all of the items that we have on the agenda tonight.
Okay. This time's an opportunity for the citizens to address the city council. We'll ask that you come forward and, when it's your time, and give us your name and address for the record, remember that you have three minutes. I would like to ask that your comments be directed to the council, and I would like to ask that your comments do not include condescending remarks regarding employees or people at this city. If you have a problem with any of us, let us have it. That's what we signed up for when we asked to be elected, but I ask that you be considerate of the people that are here, but certainly if there's anything on your mind, let us know about it. Okay? Who would be first? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Debbie Reeves, and I live at 2137 Conservation Drive. I've lived in Auburn for over 32 years. I'm a small business owner, as well as a high school math, science, and ACT prep teacher. I'm also a mother of six children, and have been blessed to use the Auburn City Library for educational reading purposes all the years we've been in Auburn. I want to say how much I appreciate the library and its staff, who's, who have always been kind, helpful, and professional during my interactions with them. I'm sure much of what they do is a thankless job, and I want to publicly thank them, just as I'd like to thank you for the hard work you do on behalf of Auburn citizens and for giving me the opportunity to speak. Yesterday, I was shown extremely explicit images of sexual acts between young people in books from our city library. I was appalled, and today verified that these books are indeed owned and loaned by our library. Furthermore, I was unable to verify that any age controls exist to prevent children or teenagers from accessing these books. The images are gratuitous and pornographic. The Auburn community is a diverse one, but grandparents and grandparents, and parents of all persuasions can agree that pornography should not be available to our children, particularly in our public library. Materials that depict sex acts in graphic detail serve as instruction manuals that can groom our children to be future sexual assault victims or victimizers. I'm asking you, as our Auburn City Council members, to exercise the authority we've vested in you, to make sure that sexually explicit images are not available to our children at the city library. I would urge you, in the future, to only appoint library board members who commit to protect our children from pornographic content, and specifically ask them for that commitment in advance. I'm sure resources at the library are limited, so I would ask why are funds being allocated for edgy explicit materials rather than being used for the many worthy, solid educational books and literature that our patrons can profit from? I would like to know who is choosing to put books like this in our library, and how they can be held accountable for making better decisions in the future, or be offered a different career path instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Who will be next? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Bonnie McEwen, I live at 722 Queensway, and I'm here today in my capacity as Vice Chair of the Auburn Public Library Advisory Board. Excuse me. Our board chair has addressed you several times over the past few months regarding the concerns expressed by handfuls of citizens about the materials available in the library. She has shared excerpts from the communications we have received from over 70 citizens. Your constituents have told us how important the library is to them and to their families, and how important it is to the quality of life in Auburn. Many have shared the importance of a diverse collection to their own well-being or mental health, or to the mental health and well-being of their family members. An Auburn University psychology professor attended a meeting and confirmed for all of us that access to these materials can contribute, quite literally, to saving lives. You have heard a concern raised that the presence, presence of these materials can pose a threat to children, but your own attorney has told you that the library has in place a protocol to allow parents to control the materials available to their children. I want to take a moment at this point and mention an article in last I want to take a moment at this point and mention an article in last week's OA News on the editorial page. It addressed both social media and books. And and the author of that article says, "Parents are in the best position to decide which books their children should or shouldn't read. Getting them to read at all is a battle in itself. It is not our place as librarians to make these decisions for parents, but our job to make available a wide variety of materials so families can make these choices, the ones that are right for them." To end, I'd like to quote from one of the constituents that wrote to us this week. "Today, there are new topics and new information that is public and widespread. Those of us who would choose to do so can read stories written by and about people different from ourselves. Such books acquaint us with the wide world and with the great variety of human experiences and circumstances. They teach empathy and generosity. No book ever persuaded a young person to become gay, lesbian, or bisexual any more than a book about life above the Arctic Circle persuaded a person to become an Eskimo." The author ends with, "Please continue your good work." So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to direct, address you this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who will be next? Please.
Susan Youngblood, seven twenty nine North Carey Drive. I fully support the library in providing a variety of materials. I'm Jewish, so I won't check out many of the many Christian books, many of the books on Christianity. My kids didn't check out the dozens of children's books on creationism because those aren't the books I directed them to. The library trusts the patrons to make their own decisions about what to read and what to believe, which I deeply appreciate. What censorship activists want to remove from our library is not pornography, though some of the books do have explicit content. That includes the award-winning memoir Ms. Daniels selected drawings from last month, a memoir in graphic novel form for adults. Literary fiction does not convert people to being gay. Multiple studies, though, show it does help people who identify with it and help other readers become more empathetic. That is why LGBTQ plus work is under attack. That is why the Bible, which has no sexual con, which has sexual content, is not under attack. The attacks across the U.S. are following coordinated strategies. Activists start with more controversial books and then roll in other works that make them uncomfortable. A Jewish picture book where kids say, "My dad's," is under attack in Florida, likely not by the Jewish community. Art Spiegelman's Pulitzer Prize-winning graphic novel Mouse is banned in Tennessee and it's been banned pending investigation in two other states. It's a compelling memoir about the Holocaust. Oh, and by the way, it shows bare breasts on a dead cartoon mouse on one page in one small frame, small frame. The ostensible reason it's being banned. Check out the book if you want to look for yourself. Allow yourself time, though, because that part of the image is smaller than half of my clipped pinky nail. Meanwhile, I'm concerned about marginalized groups being able to see themselves and thrive or even survive. I'd rather comfort a gay kid than bury a dead kid. I'm concerned about developing empathy, about the growth of hate in general. Like in the bath, like the bathroom swastikas, Dr. Barlow at East Sanford called me about twice in the last few years. Sure, one was scrubbed away along with crude drawings and the scratched-in one was painted over, but the effects lasted and you could still see the etch lines. What etching would we be making on LGBTQ plus kids and families' hearts by removing these books on their lives? And like Mr. Denmark said last month, there's a cascade. Works that make people uncomfortable for racial reasons are down the road. Look at Florida's current controversies, like mentioning Rosa Parks race, mentioning Rosa Parks race. The web searches that would lead to one of a couple of graphic novels across the library where kids, little kids, can't go unaccompanied lead more quickly to much racier content available without a library card. Please keep representation, cultivate a caring community, and trust patrons. Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Beal. I live at eight oh two Tallahoma Drive for the last thirty three years. And uh I'm here again because I want to thank you all for appointing people to serve on the library board that take their job seriously. And I want to thank the library board for taking their jobs seriously, for listening to people that come and talk to them, even when those people refer to them as sewers and the the staff that that work there and the board members as all sorts of words that you should not have to listen to people calling you. They take it seriously. They listen to those people and I want, I want to thank them for for putting themselves through that. I want to thank the the library staff for working really hard to provide material for the entire diversity of our community. Uh this last month, they had a a multilingual storytime in which they had, I don't know how many represent, over ten, I think maybe fifteen languages of picture books with people reading stories to other people in those languages. And that, it, and, you know, allows us to learn about other people and that is what a library is for. And I also want to use the rest of my time to um remind you of what's going on. Uh, this is an article from CNN from last Saturday, April first. "A federal judge in Texas ruled that at least twelve books removed from public libraries by Lano Texas, uh Lano County officials, many because of their LGBTQ and racial content, must be placed back onto the shelves within twenty-four hours, according to an order filed Thursday. Seven residents sued county officials in April twenty twenty-two, claiming their First and Fourteenth Amendment rights were violated when books deemed inappropriate by some people in the community and some lawmakers were removed from public libraries or access was restricted. The lawsuit fi- lawsuit filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Texas in San Antonio claimed county officials removed books from the shelves of the three-branch public library system, quote, 'because they disagree with the ideas within them,' end quote, and terminated access to thousands of digital books because they could not ban two specific titles. Books ordered to return to shelves included Cast: The Origins of Our Discontents by Isabel Wilkerson, They Called Themselves the KKK: The Birth of an American Terrorist Group by Susan Campbell Bartletti, and Being Jazz: My Life as a Transgender Teen by Jazz Jennings. The library system also is required to reflect these books as available in their catalog and cannot remove any books for any reason while the case is ongoing, U.S. District Judge Robert Pittman said, said in his order. And he also stated, "Although libraries are afforded great discretion for their selection and acquisition decisions, the First Amendment prohibits the removal of books from libraries based on either viewpoint or content discrimination."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Who will be next?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Walker. I live at twenty seventy-eight Arm Ridge Way. The the great thing is the previous speaker kind of stole some of my thunder, so it's going to make my uh statement a lot smaller tonight. But I did want to say, over the last few months, our library and our library board have come under attack for the content and ideas in some of the books on the shelves. The attack has spilled over to this council, our law, law enforcement, and the local media. This isn't unique to Auburn, as similar attacks have been raised in other locations across the nation. I went on to to talk about the the situation in Texas where the judge ruled in favor of the citizens. And I want to stress again, these citizens brought a lawsuit against the members of the cit, the local government where their First and Fourteenth Amendment rights had been violated. The books ranged in theme from adult to youth books, with content from race to LGBTQ content. I think what I was trying to get to here is if these books are removed from our library, who will open their wallet in the city of Auburn to pay for the lawsuits that surely will come from organizations like the ACLU or the Southern Poverty Law Center? These organizations have very deep pockets and lots of experience fighting against removed civil liberties and constitutional constitutional rights. I don't think everyone that is wanting these books removed is going to open their wallets and pay for it. Instead, it will be asked of the taxpayers in our city. So what will we give up? Will a playground maybe not get new equipment? Will we not open our new high school on time? Because the hundreds of thousands of dollars of liability will be passed on to the citizenry here in this city of Auburn. When this first came up, I mentioned here that the Supreme Court had ruled on numerous occasions that libraries are protected cathedrals of the First Amendment. And this ruling in Texas further so- solidifies it and gives recent precedences for other judges that might hear similar cases to rule in favor of the people, to rule in favor of these pieces of literature. And I think the most important thing that came out of that ruling was Judge, Judge Pittman's words. "The First Amendment prohibits the removal of books based on either viewpoint or content discrimination." Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, mayor and council. I promised you my speech tonight would be righting a wrong, but instead I'd I'd also want to talk about the Auburn Library. I believe our constitutional rights, especially the freedom of speech. I want to thank Councilman Dawson at the last council meeting for speaking up to have a freedom of speech and on behalf of the uh one of Auburn's citizens, Martha Shamp. Uh sometimes um so- something that Councilman Parsons and I have uh in common uh is that neither of us were born in the United States and both of us are naturalized U.S. citizen. The wisdom of our founding fathers produced the greatest constitution in the world, we the people, not we the government. The library book issue is not about heterosexual community or the LB, LGBTQIA+ community. It is about the impressionable minds of young kids in the Auburn community possibly being exposed to sexual content in the library. We are parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, community leaders, churches, and the community are responsible for providing the proper education through our school system and the books that are read from our library. I hope that the two library board positions that were filled tonight at the committee of the whole were great choices, not just good choices. I have talked to many council members, community leaders, and members of the community in the last two weeks. No one I have spoken to uh believe in banning any books. They're not wanting to ban books in the library, but properly placing them in the proper place, that's all. Uh adult material has always been in the adult section. In our Auburn businesses, adult content is behind shelves, not easily accessible. We ID for underage purchases of cigarettes and alcohol. Let me restate, restate, no banning of books ever. I still have continued confidence in this council in doing the right thing. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who will be next? Excuse me.
Martha Shamp, three oh seven Camellia Drive, Auburn. The glorious values of our Lord Jesus Christ are my values, Jesus Christ the same yesterday, today, and forever. He loves children. He teaches them virtue. The children of Auburn need brave protectors. They need wise, loving adults to lead them safely into knowledge of good, not the knowledge of evil, and into virtue, a clean conscience, honesty, and self-respect, self-control, purity. The vulgar and obscene books in the Auburn library run roughshod over these values. They bulldoze kids' innocence and steal their purity, purity, and they end their childhood. They are dark clouds hiding the sun. Confiscate these books. The council has the power and the authority to make the library a safe place for little souls. Put on your courage and honor. Be rescuers of helpless children, not, not their corruptors. God raises up good men for this very purpose, to act, to fight evil. No half-measures but victory. For every enemy city like Jericho, there is a Joshua. For every disgusting Goliath, there is a David. For every Sodom and Gomorrah, there is a holy Jerusalem. For every Roman invader and destroyer, there is a Judas Maccabees, who removed evil-doers from his land and justly so. Brave deeds befit the wise. Remove the snakes from the Auburn library. Confiscate the books that put poisonous venom and tears into children's eyes. It is wrong for taxpayers dollars to pay for vulgar, degrading, and shameless books that demoralize their children. Bring back the glory of the sun, the light. Remove the dark clouds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Thank you. I'm Sue Ann Balch. I live at twenty-two thirty-one Spring Hill Drive in Auburn. Uh, I think we need to get to a point on this issue where surely there's some classical liberals still in this town, I would hope. You know, I'm a graduate of Auburn's College of Liberal Arts and I was taught there that being a true liberal is somebody who can sit there and listen calmly to all sides of an issue, that everybody gets a voice, which that's happened tonight. That's happened. But I think that we need to also remember that we need to fear God more than we need to fear lawsuits because he's ultimately in control. And this is Holy Week. I'm told that last week during Lent, the transgender community held a drag show in Mobile in front of the cathedral, right out in front of the cathedral. So are we going to start having drag queen shows out on the sidewalk in front of already known Methodist or First Baptist or St. Dunstan's? You know, are we going to have drag queen story hour next in the library? Is is that what's going to start happening? Mobile Parks and Recreation in the city of Mobile is sponsoring drag queen story hours and drag queen shows in the parks of the city all summer and they're advertising toward children. I mean, you start down a slippery slope and you got a slippery slope, you know? That's what I would hope to avoid for the city of Auburn because I know I had a situation at Auburn University, I'll try to talk really fast, where because we were at the top of the alphabet, Auburn and Alabama, we end up having this federal audit because somebody complained and said that we were improperly withholding taxes from foreign nationals. Okay? And they just picked us because we're at the top of the alphabet. Ten years before, they picked the University of Alabama Birmingham. So it was only by God's grace that we very quickly were able to say, no, we're not. No, we learned from UAB's mistakes and we've already corrected those mistakes. And I would just hope that the city of Auburn can learn.
the city's library process, how the materials can be questioned and the whole process that's gone through. The transparency has been really nice and I've learned something. So thank you for bringing that front and center to everyone. We, y'all have heard a lot about concerns for children's safety, and I think those concerns in and of themselves are valid. The intention behind them, as said by everyone, is to keep kids safe. Unfortunately, the impact of some of the approaches towards the goal of keeping children safe has some harmful effects, as we've heard, talked about. I spoke a few weeks ago about how representation and acceptance is a major factor in preventing suicide among trans youth. Also, in line with children's safety, with being abused, one of the things that my faith community does that I'm really proud of is promote a lifelong sexuality education course. And it starts in kindergarten, not with, here's pictures of sex, but here are the names for your body parts. They are private, they are just for you. If someone touches them, you need to tell a trusted adult. An anecdote that I heard somewhere was a little girl comes into her class and tells the teacher, "My uncle licked my cookie." And the teacher said, "Oh, well, go get another one then." And a few weeks go by, she, the little girl comes in again, and she's scratching her crotch, and the teacher asks her, "What's up?" And she says, "My cookie's itchy." Anecdote for sure, and who knows where it came from. But the, my point being that for children to know the anatomical names of their body parts, to recognize with pictorial aids what their body parts are called, and a robust sex ed offering curriculum materials is a useful piece in preventing children from coming to harm. And I think that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Hi. My name's Kathy Rains, and I live at ten sixty-nine Running Vine Lane, Auburn, Alabama. I've never spoken before at a city council, and I really wasn't planning on speaking, but I just want my voice heard. And my voice is that I want to protect children, and I think those types of things that they're putting in books are things to be dealt with at home with their parents. And so that's basically, I just want a voice, because I know so many of these other people, the other liberals, whatever, they have voices that are loud, and I feel like people like me who want a loud voice is chicken, I guess you could say. And I wish more people, because there are a lot more people like me and that are afraid, and we shouldn't be afraid. And I just wanted to say that. So I want my voice to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the, I apologize, I've missed a good chunk of the meeting. I had other commitments.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
I get it.
My name's Ed Youngblood, seven twenty-nine North Carey Drive, and I may be reiterating what people have already said, but it's important for children to see themselves in literature. I don't care whether it's race, religion, or sexual orientation. I had friends growing up who were gay. I didn't know they were gay until I was in college. The reason I didn't know they were gay was because they were scared to tell anybody. And that bothers me. It bothers me that some of the literature that I've seen passed around discussing the books in the library is misleading. And there are books that are on the list that are said to be in the children's section, but they are not. Gay kids read and see a heck of a lot of stories about people that are straight. They're still gay. I'm pretty sure that reading a story where you've got two dads or two moms is not going to make a kid gay. I understand the concern about explicit material. I understand the concerns about lawsuits on both ends of it. But the courts have come down pretty clearly on censorship, and some of what I'm hearing tonight, late though I was, is about censorship, not all of it, but it is about censorship. It's about keeping children from seeing themselves in literature. It's about keeping children from seeing their parents in some cases, or their loved ones, and hearing those stories. Children being able to see themselves means acceptance, and acceptance helps prevent depression. It helps prevent suicide. These are important issues, and I appreciate people speaking on both sides of it. Censorship is not right. I can guarantee you there are books in this library that I disagree with. I'm pretty sure there are books on conversion therapy, which has been disproven over and over again, and yet I would not call for those books to be taken off the shelf. I am sure there are political tracts that I vehemently disagree with, and yet I would not call for those books to be taken off the shelf. When we begin talking in some communities about taking things like mouse off the shelf because there is a breast in it and we can't tell the story of the Holocaust, we have problems, and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Ms. Edge, if we could have Mr. Clark come forward to the microphone.
Yes, absolutely.
There's no one else, we'll close the citizens' communications at this time. Mr. Clark, last, two weeks ago, you gave us a summary of where we were and what are the abilities for the city council regarding this topic. There are some people that have spoken tonight that were not here two weeks ago. Would you, would you go back through some of the things that we talked about two weeks ago?
I'd be happy to, Your Honor. In two different respects, there are controls available for materials within the library. Number one, a review process, which every cardholder who is a citizen of Auburn may avail themselves of. That process is to request any material within the library to be reviewed by library staff for its appropriateness within the collection itself as a whole, or within a specific age group within the library. Those forms are available on the library's website. They can be filled out, they can be submitted to the library board for those materials to be reviewed. We have had review requests made of our library board. Those materials have been reviewed. In some cases, those materials have been adjusted in age collection up to a different collection based on the library board's review. So as I said last week, I'll say it again tonight, that process is in place. It's been in place for a while, and it is working. The second aspect of controls that are available within the Auburn Public Library are parental controls related to library cards. First and foremost, if you, if you are a parent within the city of Auburn and you wish to have a library card, you may obtain one. You may also request and obtain library cards for children under the age of eighteen. As a parent, you may then do two things which give you controls over what your children can check out from the library. First and foremost, you can restrict our self-checkout system, which requires all checkouts to be moderated by a librarian. And if you so choose, you may also request that blocks be put on your child's card, which would allow them only to check out materials from certain collections within the library, or more precisely, you can prohibit checking out materials from other collections within the library. For instance, I have three girls. I could restrict their cards from checking anything out of the young adult section or the adult section if I so chose to do that. So those are available controls that are in place at the library. They are available for all parents to avail themselves of.
Specifically, what is the role of the city council in regard to the library?
In regard to the library, under state statute, once the council creates a library board by statute, that library board is vested with all authority, and that's the wording that is used within the statute, all authority to do certain things. And one of those things is manage the collection of the library. So in relation to specifics within the collection of the library, the council has vested that authority within the library board. And there is a library board collection management policy, which has been in place for some time. It's available on the website as well. And it is a process by which the library board reviews materials and adds materials to the collection. Now, again, we're blessed in the city of Auburn. We only have an appointed library board that was created by this council in the fifties. We also staff our library with city employees, so we accomplish those tasks of the daily operation of the city of the public library with city employees. So we have kind of a combination of those two groups working in concert to manage the library collection. The two things that this council has authority over in relation to the library is the power of appointment of library boards, which was exercised by this council tonight in appointing two library board members. The other power is the power of appropriations. This council appropriates monies to be spent by the library board in operations of the library. Again, the authorizing statute which creates the library board vests authority. Once the appropriation has been made by this council, the spending of those funds is vested with the library board.
Anybody in the council that will have a question they'd like to pose to Mr. Clark tonight? Okay. Thank you for your time. This is a very challenging topic. We are, I'll speak for myself. I've read every email. I've listened passionately to every person that's spoken. I care very much about our library. My grandmother was a librarian. My family sold books for a living. Books have meant a lot to my family. It matters to me that our citizens are being served well and that our children are being taken care of. We're hearing what you're saying to us, and I hope you understand how our city works and how we were set up regarding this. Is there any other things from the city council? Do you want to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
We're adjourned.